Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open this call to order this meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectment for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First order of business, public comments. If there's anybody in the audience? We don't exactly have a full house tonight, but if you have anything to share. And if not, that's cool, too. So we'll move on. Correspondents? Nothing? Okay. Item number four, considerate, we have a bunch of minutes to approve. First will be a call for approval of the minutes of January 21st, 2020.
Second.
All right, I'll make that motion. You seconded it? Have to make sure that we all attended all of these.
Paul was absent. For the 21st?
Yeah, for the 21st.
Paul was absent.
Right. All right. Any changes? Any comments?
No.
All right, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And one abstention? Okay, next would be minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, January 28th, 2020.
Second.
Any changes?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And follow up stings? And then final would be the public hearing of Tuesday, January 28th.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And follow up stings? All right, thank you very much. Next order of business, consideration of tax refunds. We have a memo from the tax collector, Mrs. Skako. I put a motion on the floor that we approve our request for tax refunds in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. And these are overpayment, due to overpayment of taxes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Item number six, consideration of recommendations from the elderly tax abatement committee. This committee worked for about eighteen months, and I have a request that we, and I'll make a motion that we table this item because they were unable to be here to present and answer questions and provide the materials. This was presented to the Board of Finance at their last meeting for their comments, and they wanted to prepare, the committee chair wanted to prepare information. So I'll just make, put a motion on the floor that we table to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that carries. Item number seven, consideration of open space and road widening proposal for 137 and 147 Rockwell Road. The material is here, and ironically, even though we received this from the planning and zoning department with all the special permits and site maps, the only thing we have to do with this tonight is make a motion to send it back to B and Z for an 824 referral. So I'll put a motion on the floor that we refer this, that we approve and refer to planning and zoning for 824 commentary.
Second.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What are you approving? We just said that we approve and send the...
We just, well, approves, approving, sending it to...
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't use the word approve, right?
I would put down both, even though we don't have the, both the open space property and the road widening property.
Okay. All right, so we'll note, open, open space donation and road widening. Okay, any questions?
Can, is this the only map we have for that?
Yeah.
Can we get a, request a better map for this?
I've already sent an email to people. He's missing another map, too.
Okay.
He sent me the same things that he sent the map to Dion, and what's missing is the other map. There's two maps. He's missing one map, and I told him that that wasn't sufficient. I can't read it. And I asked him for the second map, and I also asked him for the proposed deeds in advance, so I could review them, make sure they're okay.
Is that along the front of the property that they're giving us more property to widen?
The road widening is, yeah, I believe most of it's on Rockwell Road. Yes.
Okay.
It's hard to see. It's not big. It's like all they did was straighten out a few little pieces, you know?
Yeah, wow.
But I still have to review it, and I have a tough time. I can't read it either. And you can't, the map that he sent us is not the type that you can blow up on your computer. That's it, what you see, a little tiny thing in front of you, so. I asked him. He said he'll get them to me.
All right, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to refer to, back to planning and zoning for 824 statutory referral. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Item number eight, consideration of 2019 water main replacement project resolution. So let me explain what this is. Yes, we've done this twice, as a matter of fact. The Department of Public Health came back and they were asking for some more specific language because we're applying for a grant to cover a significant portion of the cost. So they just wanted a little bit more detail, so we basically just have to read the thing again. Nothing is, nothing else has changed. So let me read this resolution into the record. Whereas the town of Bethel, Connecticut, special town meeting of September 24th, 2019, the town of Bethel approved a resolution recommended by the Bethel Public Utilities Commission and approved by the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance to fund an amount not to exceed nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for improvements in the form of water main replacements to the water system for the project referred to and known as the quote "2019 Water Main Replacement Project," close quote, which included the following streets: Mansfield Street, Grassy Plain Terrace, Oakland Heights, Maple Lane, Highview Terrace, from Grassy Plain Terrace up to number 22, Highview Terrace, and designate Mount Pleasant Street and Highview Terrace between number 22 and 18 as alternate project portions. Payment for the appropriate funds shall be made by the water account users of the Public Utilities Commission. Whereas the town of Bethel, Connecticut, is desirous to make application to the State of Connecticut, Department of Public Health, and other such state agencies for loans and/or grants for funding to achieve the construction of the 2019 Water Main Replacement Project. Further, Matthew S. Knickerbocker, first selectman of the town of Bethel, or his designee, is authorized to provide such additional information and execute such to other documents as may be required by any state agency of the state of Connecticut in connection with any loans and/or grants submitted by the town of Bethel, Connecticut for the construction of the 2019 Water Main Replacement Project as to any amendments, rescissions, and/or revisions to the applications, proposals, and/or agreements submitted here, too. Dated Bethel, Connecticut, 5th day of February, 2020. So that, I'll put that motion on the floor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. So Lisa Berg will be able to certify this and send it up to the state, and then we'll have our application in place for that grant, finally. Item number nine, consideration of closing of School Street for Relay for Life. And Eileen, do you want to just take a, just give us a brief outline of what this is?
Basically, they're asking to have School Street closed because they would like to provide food trucks that will be in the, on School Street so they can utilize the front lawn for all the teams and everything for Relay for Life. They're moving it downtown on May 8th, so.
So this is on Friday, May 8th?
So, and I have a memo to the Police Commission as well, which they meet next week.
Okay.
So the food trucks are going to be on the street?
They'll be on the street so that they, so like the, they'll be on one side of the street so people can line up there, and then the front lawn is still available for all the teams and everything.
All right. How is that, you talked to the merchants on the church?
Well, we'll try to stay away from the ones by, it doesn't start till after 5:00.
Oh, after 5:00?
It doesn't, it's like a 5:00 to 11:00 timeframe, so I don't believe this School Street will be closed until between 5:00 and 5:30.
Well, would you please notify the merchants and the land, owners?
The property owners?
Property owners there?
Yep.
I mean, the bank has In-N-Out, Dr. Volkanas' old place has In-N-Out. It's only the one, the middle building there where the Dr. Fine is.
Yeah, there's the fire, fire truckers there, too, so, so you know, but...
All right, so yes, please notify them that what's happening then. We'll make concessions for them or something.
Yep. Well, the police always make arrangements for access to the parking lot behind the Grosso building, too. You know, so they don't actually block it off right at the corner. They, so you can get in there for, be on the flea and for the restaurants. Okay, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the closure of School Street in front of the municipal center between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Friday, May 8th.
I think it's going to be 5:00 to 11:00.
11:00.
Oh, it said, all right, yep, got that. 11:00 PM. 5:00 to 11:00. Conditioning and approval of the Bethel Police Commission. Also, review of appropriate insurance submissions for liability coverage for the town. Which they probably have already, I would think.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Item number 10. Thank you, Eileen.
Yep.
Item number 10, consideration of a Western Connecticut Council of Governments Regional Performance Incentive Program, RPIP. This is another resolution. This has no, no bill attached to it. Basically, what this is, as you guys are familiar, we are a member of the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, which extends from Greenwich up to New Fairfield and New Milford and Sherman. And so there are eighteen towns in that regional authority. The regional authority is, has the ability to apply, to apply for regional, for incentives from the State of Connecticut, from the Office of Policy and Management, for the purpose of building regional programs to help save towns money. Some examples of that are transportation initiatives, a countywide GIS system that could interface with ours and then provide more coverage at less cost for us, regional animal control facilities, regional planometric database updates, statewide boundary map survey. All these things are paid for through grants, but in order for the regional council to apply for the grant, it has to have permission from all of its member towns. So this resolution is non-binding, doesn't cost us, there's no financial impact to it. This just says that we support, that we endorse the Council of Governments to seek these grants to provide those types of services. So, yep, so I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the resolution on behalf of... You're laughing?
Yeah, no, I thought you, that was a motion that did, okay.
Oh, that was close enough. All right, so you seconded that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Oh, now we get down to the fun stuff. Consideration of Charter Revision Commission Recommendations. Marty gave, sent me a memo, which I have here. Basically, this board has fifteen days by which we must approve or reject the, or send back for consideration the final draft report from the Charter Commission following the public hearing. And that public hearing occurred a week ago tonight. So I will try your minds. Are there, are there any issues that you would like to put on the floor for reconsideration, or for approval, or for rejection? Basically, at this point, we either accept it or we send it back to them.
Well, we can, when, if we said, if we approve it, we still have the opportunity, once we decide what to put on the ballot, to make any recommendations.
Right.
And my only disappointment was that they didn't consider the four-year term. It was a four to three vote on the commission. They did have public hearings, but the public hearings were really very sparse. There might have been ten people saying no to the four years and seven saying yes to the four years. So I would have liked to see that, to go off to the ballot and let the general public vote on it. But I don't know if the board wants to push that issue or not. There was a lot of controversy about it for the, you know, few people that did come to the public hearing about it, so.
Well, charter revisions are always controversial, so, you know. I, personally, I agree with you. The task of a charter commission is to use their best judgment to, because there's a very complicated process that follows this. It's not like that board is changing the charter on behalf of the town. You know, the townspeople have to vote on it. But that particular item did fail by only one vote. And I do think that the Charter Commission was swayed a little bit by the people who came regularly, who had a single issue to oppose that. And most people are busy. So my question to my colleagues is, is this important enough to send that back for reconsideration?
All response to that. We failed last time, and of course, that was a complicated issue because they were mixing a lot of apples and oranges as far as term limits and we also increased the board by, I guess, the number two. But you know, given what I, what I've, the feedback I've got, I think if we send it back to the board, and this goes on the ballot, it's going to have a domino effect. A negative effect. For some odd reason, I have no way of proving it, but people are happy the way it is right now. I sort of, initially, I was for it, but in thinking about it, you know, I think people speak for themselves on this issue. So I would not send it back just for that one alone.
Rich?
Well, I was just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
My, my comment was to the board, I brought up that, you know, ninety-nine percent of all of the boards are four years. The only people right now are two years, is the Board of Selectment and the Treasurer. And why the Treasurer is four years, we made the town clerk four years. You know, it just seems that would be more consistent with, you know, everybody's term being four years. And again, I don't know if we want to go the hassle of, you know, ask them to look at it again.
Another other issue that I've got, it's number eight, add just right in a non-binding advisory question. A question, it's just like, you know, Goldilocks here right now.
That's, that was my main complaint, too.
I admit, you know, I think we, all of us, you know, at one time, no matter how the vote goes, whether it's rejected or approved, it's always too high.
Yeah.
You know, and I think at this stage of the game, it's sort of a space taken up on a ballot. That's, it doesn't give me any confidence as to, or going to, going back, especially to Board of Finance, if it's rejected. Does that help them out? I don't think so.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me go back to the first item. I agree wholeheartedly with Rich. You know, the complaint was voiced by very, very few people. I'm talking about less than five people, I think. That because the four-year term was rejected and the last time, it shouldn't go, we shouldn't even consider it. I don't accept that argument for the, for two reasons. One, it wasn't just a four-year term. It was combined with a five-member Board of Selectment, which many towns have gone to because of the workload. And I had, personally, many people come up to me after that failed, and it failed pretty narrowly. It wasn't that, it wasn't that, it wasn't a landslide. And they said, had the four-year term been a separate item, they would have voted for it. But if you remember, we even dealt with that issue when we constructed the ballot. And the problem was, the attorneys, or the attorney who worked for the Charter Commission interwove the two things, and you couldn't separate it, you know, into two separate votes, five-member board and four-year term. So it went down, but there was a, really, I think, I still think there's a lot of support for it. But I agree with you. I think that at this time, I don't think that it, I think it would complicate things, but I wouldn't be surprised if it comes up again. I do want to go back to the item we just brought up, Paul, number eight. I would prefer that they take that, that they, that they, we ask them to reconsider that and go back to what we asked for, which is remove the advisory questions completely. And if they, if they won't do that, if they refuse to reconsider that, which is their right, I'm not criticizing them, then I think we should just leave this off the ballot. Because going to, going to a, taking a complicated question that causes a lot of rejected ballots and making it more complicated, I think just takes it backwards. I don't see any, any value in this at all.
Well, I attended a lot of those meetings, and a couple of people work at the polls, and they exposed their opinion that a lot of people said, why isn't just right on it, you know? So that's why they, they went down.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I get that.
We had requests them taking it off completely, and Billy, with his group, really spoke up against it, that, you know, it supposedly gives the Board of Finance a direction to go with. I've never seen, well, I think there was only one vote that was no too low.
No, actually, it wasn't.
Back when the school failed, the school budget failed that one year.
It, that was the one where it came close, but even that was still too high.
High?
Yeah. It never, it's never, you know, the funny thing that sticks in my mind is when they really started talking about, where did that come from? It came from one superintendent twenty-five years ago who was confused because the, because the town budget failed, and they were, they were combining town and school budgets at that point. So I don't, it seems to me that people vote yes, and that automatically means it's, it's right enough to vote yes, so.
Well, yeah, but a lot of people vote yes, but vote too high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly. So I get that.
Well, you can ask them to look at it and see what they want to do.
Well, I'm going to make, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we ask the Charter Commission to review item number eight on the non-binding advisory question and reconsider removing the non-binding advisories completely.
I'll second that.
Okay? Any further discussion?
And just on that one item, right?
Yeah, just on that one item.
Okay.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries? Are there, are there any others? Everything else, I think they did a very good job on, except for the four-year.
The non-binding, not non-binding, but the consortium?
Yeah.
I personally like the way it is. If they want to use a consortium, they come to the Board of Selectment and ask the Board of Selectment for the permission to lay out their case for why they want to do it, not just to give carte blanche to do it.
Okay, what do you, what's the language that they recommend for that?
You know what that was, Dion?
Oh, it's number one, allow use of purchasing cooperatives. What do you think about that?
I'm fine with that, frankly.
I personally don't like it. I like to see that, you know, what they're doing on, you know, we like to support local people and for these consortiums to go out. Yes, they might be able to save a little money, but we're not supporting the local dealers. And maybe, maybe some of them are, might be in the, but that's my opinion. Like to have a little oversight on it.
How is, I don't have the full draft with me. I just had to change it. How was that, how was that?
It was to allow the Board of, the Board of Ed and the town to, you know, to use a consortium without coming to the Board of Selectment for permission to do it.
As I recall, isn't that similar to using the state bid process, where you can, you don't have to go out to bid? I mean, a state contract? Because...
Well, they would go to these different consortiums, depending on what they would want to buy, and they would go out and get the bids and present it back to the purchasing agent, whoever was going for it.
Is this, is this what you're looking for?
To allow the purchasing cooperative.
Can I speak? I, you know, the, the problem that I have with it is, it seems to conflict with on the next page, if you look at item 3I. Whenever it appears to security, so this shall be inconsistent with the public interest. Such public advertising and bids may be dispensed with by the Board of Selectment and the Board of Ed. And I just think that, to be quite honest with you, the state, state consortium, all right, I, we kind of stretched that, if you want to know the truth. There's nothing in our charter that officially allows that. All right, it was done because it was, they covered all the bases of what we had in the charter. They have already put the stuff out, all right, but we've never, I mean, I would say if you're going to put language like this in there, I would put the state in there, too, just to be safe. But I think that, I think that Rich is kind of right. I think that maybe it ought to be that, that the Board of Selectment have to make that decision. You know, and it's okay. There's nothing wrong with a consortium. Because otherwise, you're not even going to hear about some of this stuff. You know, like, for instance, if there's a $200,000 item that was approved in the budget, and they want to go to some consortium, why would they come back to the Board of Selectment?
So effectively, though, that's how we operate now, correct? By exception?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we have an exception to waive the bids.
Right.
But we've also, what we've done in the past is, because it's a relatively new thing, when the state has come out with something, they've done this, we've taken it that they've done their due diligence and everything.
Right.
So it's, we've just gone along with it. I think that if you're going to put something like this in here, you should add the State of Connecticut in here as well. And, and we don't know about this, these consortiums. I have no idea what they've done. I don't know who they're talking to, to you. We have to take it on their word. We have no idea, you know?
Well, in the ones that we've approved by exception, we have looked at them, like the Galveston-Houston one?
Yeah.
Was accepted by the State of Connecticut, DAS.
The problem is with this language, they're not coming back to you.
Yeah, it, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at. With this language, they're not coming back to you. I don't think they will.
No, they're not.
They just, you know, if it's already been approved, the monies have been approved, they go out, and if it's a valid consortium, they can just do it. They don't have to come back to you.
But, and also, there's nothing about taking the lowest responsible bidder, too, so I...
Yeah, well, I think the idea, yeah, you're right. But I think the idea is that consortium, it is the lowest, you know, that you're going to get, probably, you know? But, but Rich is right. There's nothing that's coming back. And I'm not saying that the Board of Selectment should always have the final say. I'm just saying that, you know, you got somebody, you're spending 200 or 300 or 400,000 dollars, there's no oversight. You know, who's going to be responsible for that?
And we can still approve it, but at least there's more people that know about it.
I think you could just change this by saying after referral back and agreement by the Board of Selectment or something like that.
Okay, would you want to...
Or the Board of Ed.
Okay. Well, what's the best way to handle this? Change the language, or just delete it and leave it the way it is, which by default, now things have to come to, before the Board of Selectment?
I think you're better off doing that. Just say that you have no objections regarding the use of these procurements or purchasing cooperatives, but you believe it should go back through the Board of Selectment, that's all, for final review and approval.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I mean, there's no easy answer, you know, but I don't, like, we had, I had a real tough time struggling. And I'm fit from Texas. I think it was something that came through with Texas.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm on line, and I'm trying to find out what's going on, and it's very difficult, you know, I mean, to, you know, get to the bottom line.
Well, do you want to make a motion?
On that? Well, I'll make a motion that we strike it and leave it as it is.
Strike number one completely. Strike number one completely.
Or, or, or change it just to have the man.
Or include, or include the Board of Selectmen. I mean, what's the difference? I mean, they, they can do it, but they still need to come back to the, the Board of Selectmen.
Tell you what, we, we have to confer with them anyway. If we send anything back, you know, they're, we, I, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have to actually draft the language right now. We just.
No, you can.
No, you just tell them that.
Okay, why don't, why don't we just say we want to revise that?
Well, we can ask them to revise it and we'll, we'll look at it when we make our final decision.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Well, you, you might, they don't have to come back and talk to you. I think the idea is that they should. So you might want to give them a little bit of guidance of what you're looking at here, you know, that, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll put a motion on the floor that we include review of number one, use of, allowing use of purchasing cooperatives to include a mechanism to provide Board of Selectmen and, and Board of Education oversight.
And/or.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Okay. Anything else on charter?
I, I have something. I just, I, I have a comment because, oh, I might not be around back when this actually goes into effect, but assuming I am when it goes into effect, I have to tell you, I don't know, or another medium consistent with the requirements of the Connecticut general statutes needs. And I explained that to the chairman. When he got up and he talked about, there's a site for, that now the state of Connecticut for their legal notices, everything goes online. I said, let me see it. I said, send me the site where it is. I want to look at it. I never got anything from him. I don't know if he forgot or whatever. But I'm telling you, that's gonna be the biggest argument you've ever had. Because we have other things. We have things like, there's specific statutes for planning and zoning that say when you have to publish things and where you have to publish them. You know, you can't just, if they're gonna, if they're gonna say that we have other requirements, which I don't have a problem with. It's a lot easier to say, yeah, that's fine. But they need to be more specific than this. They, they need to give some direction. So whoever's interpreting this, and I don't know if you read what it said before. Where was it here? I forgot what it was here. I remember reading. There are reasons, one of the things why they did it that way. Let me see if I can find it again. Now I don't see it yet. But I remember when I read it, I said, geez, I said, that doesn't. I don't know if you, Nick, say clarify that one point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, I just think, I can't find it now, but I know there was some language here that just, where they gave the reason that they just thought that it should be changed and. I, I can't find it now. I apologize to the board, but.
Oh, it's item ten, Roman numeral ten. References to newspaper published publications added or other medium consistent with the requirements of Connecticut general statutes.
Yeah, but I saw language someplace else which said why. You know, why they, why they were gonna do it. And I don't see it here now. And I, like I said, I apologize. Let me see here.
Marty, the idea that I got from it was that they wanted to have language in the charter so that if, when it did become okay, under, you know, by the, when the state gave the final okay, then we would have verbiage in our charter that would allow us to follow.
So, so our charter wouldn't inhibit us?
Inhibit us, yes.
Yeah, the, the problem is, is that if you go through the statutes, I'm gonna take the guess and say there's gotta be a thousand, a minimum of a thousand different publication notices, how they're to be done, where to be done. I think to wait until the, the state of Connecticut goes through the entire set of statutes to come up with one thing, it's never gonna happen. It's never gonna happen. They don't even, for instance, I'll give you, with foreclosures, you know? It's pretty common you see legal notices with foreclosures. They, they cut back on them, yeah, they have, but you'll still see in the newspaper, you'll see a little snip of where to go to in order to do it. And we've approved, I shouldn't say we, the board has approved, you know, based on my review. If you remember, if we had to sell excess materials and equipment.
Right.
That we had to advertise and everything. And what's happened is Brad found an outfit that will advertise all over the country. And all, what I came down to is that we just had to put a little clip in the newspaper. That's it. This is where you can find all this, that we have things for sale. Here it is online. And I felt that that was good enough. But I really don't know what this is, and until it gets clarified, you're gonna end up with a lot of fights. You know, if you end up with, you end up with another penny saver, we're gonna have a problem. And I gotta tell you, not everybody goes online to look at stuff.
Well, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, if that's the case, if we do this, then the first thing that I would say is, I don't think the Board of Selectmen should send out anything or notifying somebody that there's a referendum anymore. Why? If we're putting all our legal notices online, put it online. Let the people read it. If they want to get out and vote, same thing. Why bother? And it's, it, it doesn't have to be an actual legal notice either, you know, something in writing, you know? But you, you're talking thousands of different examples of publications, you know? And I, I don't, I don't have an answer. All I know is that this is gonna cause a lot of confusion and a lot of problems. But you vote, I don't. Marty, let me ask you this question. If Nick Hoffman said, he was chairman of that Charter Revision Commission, said there is a statute, he hasn't sent it to you yet. No, he, but he didn't say there was a statute. He said that, that the state of Connecticut now required everybody at the meeting, I'm paraphrasing, required that all their stuff, all their legal notices be through the internet. Okay?
Okay.
There's some things that are different than legal notices. There's publication notices, there's legal, there are differences. So I asked him after the meeting, I said, I'd be interested to see where you got that from. Can you tell me where it is? And he said, I'll send you where I got it from, but I haven't heard from it.
Yeah, I, I read that press, there was a, a article in the Connecticut Mirror about that. The agency that made that statement was, was just the judicial branch, the Justice Department. Doesn't apply to any other part of the state, uh, state government and it could be challenged in court. I, you know, I don't know. They've, they've unilaterally decided that that's what they're gonna do.
I don't like the idea of having to publish things in the newspaper that cost us thousands of dollars. That's crazy. I understand that. But at the same time, I don't know, you know? I think the real answer is to go through our charter and change what we have in the charter per se for each thing. Like, there was a question that was brought up about the ordinance, what we have to do with an ordinance, you know? I mean, if we've got to publish the whole damn ordinance in, in, in the newspaper, it costs a fortune, you know? You know, maybe we can cut back on that. Maybe what it would be is in the, and I know it's a lot of work and it's after the fact, but you'd go through the charter and you'd say, okay, publication, you know, when, in order to do an ordinance, there has to be publication thirty days before the hearing of the entire ordinance in a newspaper. Well, instead of saying that, just say you have to put a notice in, in the newspaper where it can be found. So it's three lines instead of, you know, fifteen columns, you know? And then you can refer to, so at least they have some kind of notice, you know? I mean, and like I said, it's kind of after the fact, but I didn't think that we're gonna be this broad in what they said that we're gonna do.
Well, I, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that with regard to number ten, that we refer that back to the commission for, for clar, for clarification. And just make sure that we're not stumbling into something that's gonna be, be inconsistent with the state. Does that, does that sound reasonable? All right.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments?
This is number six here.
Oh, you know what? I'm looking at, at the, the section that's, number ten. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries.
I have, I have a question for Marty on, on number one. The section of cover, registration, uh, registrations.
Resignations.
Resignations and removals. Is that? Are we allowed to do that for the non, for the commissions, boards and commissions that are non-elected? But elected, we can't do anything? Is there, is there something saying that you can't do it for elected people? So why are you doing it for?
Well, you can't do it for elected people because they're elected.
Right, because that's a state statute and the other is not state statute.
Well, I think you can do this. The only thing is, it's pretty broad. I happen to think you'll, it'll never be used. Because it's, I don't know what for causes. Like, they gave a couple of examples, but, you know, it's, it, it might be good just to have it, just to have a hammer over somebody's head and say, hey, look at, who the heck wants to be the subject of a public hearing?
Well, that, yeah, that, I was the one who wrote that original request and, and I wrote some language to go with it. I think they changed it. But the reason was, we had a, I'm trying to think of what appointed board it was. An appointed, appointed board member who moved away.
Right, different state.
He lived in New Jersey. He refused to send in a resignation. Everybody in Town Hall knew he no longer lived in Bethel. But I went to the town clerk's office and they said, I can't take him off. You know, I don't have the authority to do that. They went to the registrar's and said, I can't take them, can't take him off. I can't, can't, because the charter already says if you cease to be an elector in Town of Bethel, then you're no longer, you're automatically. But nobody felt they had the authority to actually remove his name from that and allow us to appoint somebody who would participate in the meetings. And then when, so I, I think Lisa corresponded with him and asked him to come to Town Hall and he wrote back an email and said, well, now that I live in New Jersey, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to go. So we took that as admission that he no longer lives in Bethel, is not an elector in Bethel. But this went on for six months trying to, and nobody felt like they had the, the clout to, to remove the guy from. So I'd, I'd like to leave that as it is, just so, like Marty says.
Yeah, no, I, I, I like it, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a conflict between elected people and the non-elected people. That's why I was asking Marty.
No, if you look at our charter too, we've got a difference between minority representation between appointed and elected too. So there is distinctions already.
Okay. Okay. All right. So are we done with charter?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. All right, moving on to number twelve, reappointment of town council. Are you sure you want to do this?
I agree. Well, since he charged it, it's going to affect more than two years from now.
All right, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we reappoint Town Council Martin Lawler to the position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much, Marty, and we appreciate your sage advice.
I figured you were all abstained.
Item thirteen, consideration of dates for the Chestnut Ridge water tank. We have to set a date for a special town meeting and then at that meeting, we'll have to set a date for a referendum. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we set a special town meeting date of Monday, March second, 2020. Meeting room A here at, at Town Hall at six thirty P M.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Now I'm gonna add, I'm gonna make a motion that we add as, item number fourteen. This is my fault. We completely forgot to put First Elections Report on here. We had so, Dan, Dan had so much stuff to cover. I, I was throwing stuff at her and that got skipped. So I'll just make a motion. We add First Elections Report.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So I have two items for you. One, a comment on the, the charter revision. First of all, I want to go on the record and thank the individuals for their hard work. Charter revisions are always controversial. Some, some, some things win, some things lose. Sometimes people who are very passionate about things don't see their, their favorite initiative to go through. But I thank each and every one of them for the time they spent on that. There was one thing that I considered briefly, talked about with a couple of people. I was going to suggest that we, we ask them to consider a fire commission for the purpose of providing strategic planning and management of the assets that we have at the fire departments. However, when we send this back to the Charter Commission, they only have thirty days to, to consider it, and that's too big an issue. So I think, I think we have to deal with that by ordinance rather than by, by charter. But I wanted to make you aware of that. Item number two, on that topic, the, the fire committee that we put together that's looking at the apparatus has been, been doing outstanding work. They're meeting tomorrow night. And I believe that we will have a recommendation from them within a couple of weeks. And one of their charges also is to produce not only a recommendation on the current piece of equipment, on its viability to remain in service, but also to recommend an apparatus for the future, in the not-too-distant future, that would be specced for both departments to use. So we're looking at this as, as a townwide and a, as a regional thing, instead of just, you know, every department having their own and duplicating, duplicating equipment. So they'll be meeting tomorrow night. I think at our next meeting, we might have a recommendation from that, that soon. And last but not least on my report, I gave you, this is a big departure from the way I've done this in the past. I've given you my draft of the budget that I'm going to, that I plan to present to, first to you two, after the budget reviews and then, of course, you will vote on that and make whatever changes you want. It'll go down to the Board of Selectmen. But one of the, one of the problems I think we've had in the past in waiting until after the statutory budget hearings is that there isn't really enough time to take a lot of complicated budget material and adequately inform the public. And in some cases, even adequately inform the members of the Board of Finance who may not know, definitely don't know the intricacies of many of the departments and the internal workings. So this gives you a budget summary, the, the legal size thing. Gives you a budget summary of every department. I have included in this download the comments that are, that are in there, the major comments. Not everything, but the budget drivers. The full information is available to you online. And the finance department is printing, will be printing full budget packages for you as well.
I agree.
So, so you, well, I'll have copies to make notes on, but it'll also be online. So not for, not for a vote tonight, of course. What, what I hope to achieve here is that, and I'm going to provide this information to the Board of Finance tomorrow. I, I, I hope that when we get into the budget hearings, which start a week from today, I believe, right?
No, a week from Monday.
A week from Monday.
Yesterday.
Okay, a week from Monday. What I hope to achieve is that people will read through this and they'll be prepared with questions. Instead of trying to absorb an enormous amount of information, you know, from seven o'clock in the evening till ten o'clock in the evening and then not really remembering, not being able to remember all the details when they go to vote on it in a, a couple of weeks down, down the line. So feel free to look through this, write down your questions so that when they, we sit in front of the department heads, you can, we can see, you know, we could, we could be better prepared. One thing I do want to say though is, the change, of course, is, that I'm recommending is higher than we would like. But I think we have to deal realistically with, with our budget. We've had back-to-back losses in the town budget. And at the same time, just like Dr. Carver is experiencing an increase in enrollment, is putting pressure on the schools, we are seeing a significant increase in workload and we, we have to deal with it realistically. So you can just see on, on page one, building permits in the last four years up forty-two percent. Land use applications up sixty percent. Health department applications and inspections up forty-four percent, up ninety-nine percent just since last year. There, there is an enormous workload issue that we have to deal with. So total permits are up forty-three percent. The good news is that some of these departments are actually, because of the way we've restructured their fees, the user fees, these departments, while their, the workload is going up and therefore their, their part-time help costs are going up, their revenue is also going up. So we're seeing a very significant increase in revenues from fees. Next year's grand list growth was very, or the previous year was very substantial. We'll see a nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar lift in income.
This year, this year.
Yep. That's proj, I didn't put that in there because Bob is still working on the other revenue. But there are, there are other revenue inputs that are also higher. So this doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna see a big tax increase. There probably will be some, but it, there, there are revenue offsets to some of these costs. I, I liken this to, if you, if you run a business and your business is successful, let's say you fix, fix lawnmowers and tractors. As you get more and more work in, you have to, you know, you have to pay. As you get more and more work in, you have to, you know, you have to pay overtime to get the work done, eventually you have to hire extra people to get the work done, but the revenue is coming in with it as well. And, and that's exactly the situation that our land use departments are, are faced with. The other thing is, we, we still need to move to a sustainable budget position with regard to highway work and with capital non-recurring. So there's a modest increase in capital non-recurring, I think that goes from six fifty to seven hundred thousand. And highways go from seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand in the budget that I'm recommending. And both of those will probably have to go up in the future as well. But we, we need to get highway up to between nine fifty and a million for it to be sustainable. And then that keeps things, you don't have to worry about increasing the budget, that can roll forward and just with minor inflation adjustments.
Do you have capital in there too?
No, I don't have capital in there, that's, that's gonna, I'll, I'll give that to you guys within the next couple of days, because I'm massaging that. But the other, the last thing I wanted to point out is that, as you were aware, in the last two years, the Board of Finance has employed a debt reduction schedule, where they've, they've been paying off short-term debt. The net change in that, that has been enormously successful. There, there is an increase in debt in here of about a, I think it's two hundred and sixteen thousand or there. About one hundred percent of that is the short-term debt only for the schools, for the school renovations. We promised the voters that when we, when the police station debt went online, that it would be offset by decreases in short-term debt, and that has, there's actually been more short-term debt pulled away than, than the increase in the police station. So the net change in this budget by paying off the short-term debt the way the Board of Finance did in the last budget season is four hundred and forty-three thousand reduction. So if they hadn't done that, then this, that would have been a lot worse. This, this debt number would have been a lot worse. So I will leave you with that. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the six million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's on the, the town side for the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
And, and there was discussion on the charter about, you know, maybe possibly going back to the one budget. Because, because I, actually I had brought it up, of going back to the one budget, because of, of this particular item. How can we show the residents or make them aware of that there's an ex, technically it's an extra six million dollars on the Board of Education side? So they're aware of it, so when they vote for the, the budget and they turn down the town side, the town can't touch six, well, at least the, the six million seven?
Yeah. And by the way, that's one point one million higher than last year, and a hundred percent of that is the debt from the school.
Yeah.
My motions for the town meeting always include, I don't know if it includes all of the Board of Ed, but I know it includes the maintenance for the buildings. We always break it out. I'm trying to remember, I don't recall if I put that on the ballot, but that's easy to do. You just put it on the ballot, yeah, you put on the ballot that the total town budget is whatever, thirty-eight million dollars, of which six point five million is for Board of Ed, you know, building maintenance, et cetera, et cetera.
Charge, et cetera.
Yeah, that includes, that's easy to do.
I, I, it's easy to do, but people don't read it.
Well, they should read it.
Well, I, I understand they should read it, but they don't read it, and, and when they vote the town side of the budget down.
Well, I don't see there why there's no reason why we can't highlight it.
I agree with you, Marty.
You know, just bold it, the town size that includes that. But we have been doing that.
And a loudspeaker broadcast.
Yeah.
That's, that's one, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's exactly one reason why I wanted to get this budget in front of you guys early, because I'm going to start presenting to PTO groups tomorrow, tomorrow night. And, you know, everything's subject to change, of course, as we go through the system, but that is the main message that I want people to understand, is that those costs that are untouchable on the town side budget are related to schools. So if you, if you vote down the town, but, I mean, it's, we're really getting to kind of a crisis point in a couple of departments. If the town budget does not pass, there's some ugly things that have to happen, and the other thing I'm going to do is publish the list of roads that are, that are in that budget too.
Is there any way that this could be brought over to the Board of Ed's side?
Sure, you could do that if you want. But what happens is, here's the problem, the reason why it's done this way, if I remember my history right, is that you have to recall, the Board of Ed, once they get their bottom line approved, they can use it for whatever they want.
Exactly.
So that's the problem, that's why it was done this way, Rich. This way, if we've got four million dollars dedicated to building maintenance, it's four million dollars, it's going for building, it's not going to go to buy copier, um, trip. Copier paper, that's the reason why it was done this way.
Yeah, we had that problem.
Yeah. I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't happened in a long time.
Right.
I think you've got an extremely responsible Board of Ed and superintendent, and we've had one, the same situation, pretty stable for the last ten years. Before that, it was a nightmare.
Is that a legislature thing that we have to do, or is that an accounting thing, or?
I think it's just an accounting thing if you want.
I, I, I'm just asking.
No, I'm not, I'm not adding.
I'll have Bob, I'll have Bob research it, make sure it conforms with the EDO one that Terry has to do, and, and the GASB standards, so I'll, I'll find out about that.
You also could, from an accounting point of view, during, in the budget, you could, you could break this out to a separate line item, saying, you know, for instance, maintenance, insurance.
Right, right, like on a four sixty account, how they have different lines.
The problem with that is what happens if it fails? You can't change it. You, you know, you can't not-
Well, I, I, I understand it, but you're asking for clarity right here.
Yeah, right.
It's the only way, because right now it's sort of a hidden thing.
Yeah.
Because Board of Education budget reflects strictly education today.
Yeah.
Doesn't require the maintenance of the buildings, and, and our responsibility for the buildings and, et cetera. But I think if you break it out like, like the maintenance thing is saying, extraneous.
That's something I'd like to look into.
Yeah.
Just keep in mind the history, though, that's, that's why.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, they, but, you know, the workman's comp, I mean, they're not going to pay their workman's comp bill, or they gotta pay those things, you know? The only thing they could not really do is the maintenance on the buildings, but, you know, the others, obligations, right?
Which has happened in the past, years ago.
I've been there, I know that.
Yeah. I just have one comment here, based on the First Lieutenant's report. You know, I agree, I, I like what's happening with the fire department. You know, and I, I agree with you that eventually we should really look at a fire commission. However, in the interim, since we have this group of men, you know, we may want to consider keeping this as a subcommittee for the Board of Selectmen to challenge whatever is being presented by both fire departments.
I've already talked to him about that.
Oh, good, good.
At least, at least the chairman.
You know, because we, there's a lot of expertise there.
Yes.
And, and it's non-political at this, at this stage for either fire department.
You're right.
So, you know, that was my only comment, I got thinking about that, I said, you know, this is perfect, so.
I, I, I think that they, they could be around for quite a while as an ad hoc advisory.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent. Okay, good. Any other comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you for attending today.
I thought when I looked at the agenda, you'd be here till at least ten thirty.
I, I hope you were not bored out of your skull.
It's for Eagle Scout or Boy-